Page as well. So before we call it to order, I just some kind of housekeeping. I guess I can, I guess I can go ahead and call it to order. Before we get to the invocation, I just want some housekeeping. If you can, as things are being presented, mute yourself or Sean may need to mute everybody sometimes if there's some background noise. So keep an eye on your mute button. And once it's time for discussion, you, we can unmute ourselves to speak. And I ask that if you're not speaking to mute yourself, just to eliminate any, any noise. And that's sort of how this, this will go. And so anybody got any technical questions before we get rolling? No? All right. Mr. Clemmer, if you would like to lead us in an invocation, please.
Pleasure. May we pray. Our sacred heavenly father, you have blessed us to live in a free country, opportunity to gather and make decisions that affect our citizens. Lord, we ask you to stop this pandemic upon us. Be with the families that have lost loved ones due to this virus. Give them comfort. Give them answers. Kill the sick, Lord, and protect all of our city employees as they go about their assigned duties each day. May I ask, Lord, for a special request to protect my daughter Rebecca, who is a nurse caring for the very sick on the COVID-19 floor at Lexington Memorial. Be with our leaders, our national leaders, our state leaders. Give them guidance. Be with us, Lord, as a council to make good decisions tonight. His precious name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. And, and our thoughts are present with your daughter and your family too, as she does, as she works one of her heroes. Naomi, if you would make sure our camera is a little bit facing the flag. I don't know if the viewers at home will be able to see that, but we would like to stand and Naomi's camera will have the, Naomi, if you want to unmute yourself too, you will become the primary speaker and we'll be able to see you, see it. So if we can stand and give our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we're going to dig right on in today is the Thursday, April 2nd. Our council budget workshop. We have everybody here on our Zoom account. All city council members are present. We also have Naomi, Mr. Sean Bell, as well as representatives from First Tryon. So, Mr. Bell, I'll kind of turn it over to you. And I think First Tryon is up first, correct?
Thank you, Mayor. We are going to for, in order to kick off our first budget work session of the year, we're going to start off with a presentation from our financial advisors for First Tryon out of Charlotte. And they are going to walk us through our capital planning model in which staff and department heads have loaded in into this model all of our capital requests, not only for this coming year, but for the next several years. And our advisors are going to kind of walk us through the financial impact on fund balance and tax increases and things of that nature if we were to fund every single one of them. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Chee Wood and, and Mr. Will Allen.
Great. Thank you, Sean. Hopefully everyone can hear me okay. Please tell me if you can't. My name is David Chee Wood and my colleague Will Allen is on the line as well. And I think Sean is Will Manning the spreadsheet here or is that on your end?
It's on, on my end.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for having us participate in a budget workshop here this evening. Wish we could do there, everyone could do there in person and we can do this live here. But it's operating in a different world here. And so hopefully this works and y'all can see everything and happy to answer any questions along the way. As Sean said, our firm, First Tryon, just by way of background, serves as the city's financial advisor. We've been working with y'all for a couple of years now. We helped you with the 2019 installment purchase revenue bond that was issued last year. And we've also, we do a lot of just capital financial planning. So that's what the main topic is here tonight. We worked with the city over the last couple of years to develop what we very unoriginally call our capital planning model. It's an Excel based model where we can load up every project you want to consider. It can be a formal capital improvement plan. It can be a wish list of capital projects, but we load those up. We also load up your financial statements, historical as well as projected so that we can turn certain projects on, turn them off, look at how we fund those with cash or with debt or a mixture of the two and what the impact is on your financial statements. Particularly, we're looking at your, your general fund, your natural gas fund, sewer fund, and mostly a solid waste fund. And so those are the main funds we're focused on. We're looking at things like fund balance, the cash on hand, debt service coverage, millage impact. Those are the main financial ratios we're focused on here. And so as Sean said, you've gotten the list from your different departments of their capital request for the upcoming budget year fiscal '21, as well as the next four years, going out through fiscal '25. What we've done is we've loaded everything up into the model and we want to show you if you funded it, excuse me, if you funded everything, what would the impact be on that? And so Sean, if you're running that, if you don't mind going to the next page here, just to give folks, because I know we have, we've presented to the city before and we presented this capital planning model before. So, so for the members that have been on council for a couple of years, this will be a little bit of a refresher. You may remember some of what we, what we're talking about here tonight and the model itself. For the new city council members, please let me know if any questions on them. I'll give a little bit of an overview again before we dive into some of the specifics here. But on page one, again, we are, we've worked with Naomi and Sean to update this capital planning model over the last several weeks. And this is as you did these capital requests and we're loading them up. We're walking through the model and spent a lot of time with Sean and Naomi going through that to make sure certain assumptions are correct, that we have kind of good underlying data in there. As you would all expect, a model like this is only as good as the numbers and assumptions we have in it. So we spent some time looking through those to make sure everything's flowing correctly. But the goal is to be able to forecast what the impact of funding these proposed capital projects over the near term and long term horizon will be. And then it gives you all, as a city council, an idea of if you did everything, here's what the impact is. You may look at this, I'm guessing you look at this and say, we can't do everything on this list, certainly not in this convinced timeframe. So what happens if, and that's where the scenario development can begin. And we can say, what happens if we lower the amount that we're funding? If we take it out a couple of years, if we just turn it off altogether? And so that's what the model is designed. It's designed to be interactive, to allow you to turn projects on and off, run multiple scenarios live. We do a lot of it in budget workshop sessions like this. And so we're happy to get into kind of scenario development after we show you some of the set data we have here. Or it can be something where you, this can be the time to talk about it and think about different scenarios that you'd like to run going forward. And we can always follow up with those. But for the model itself, the main inputs that we have loaded up, we've loaded up your existing debt. That's very important. We want to know what your existing debt service structure looks like because as debt rolls off, that naturally creates capacity to issue new debt without having an impact on it or at least mitigating the impact on it. So we've got all your existing debt loaded up, hospitality bonds, installment purchase revenue bonds, geo bonds, a couple of capital lease purchases as well. All of those are loaded up. Financial performance, as I mentioned, we've loaded up the last five years of historical financial statements for those key major funds we've talked about. And then the, for projections, we'll talk about that. We've got pretty basic projections in there for now, but we can tinker with those as we go. The capital improvement plan or project wish list or budget request, however we want to phrase that, but the list of projects that you want to consider. And then the credit profile, the credit profile right now is not as much of a concern for the city because you don't have a public market credit rating. But within the model, we have the ability to estimate what that credit rating would be if you went and issued bonds in the public market, which would require you to go to somebody like Moody's or Standard and Poor's or Fitch, one of the main rating agencies, and get the bonds rated. It's just a good kind of check within the model to say, you know, if you did this, you're still, you know, we think you'd still be credit worthy, you know, maintain a good quality credit rating. Again, not a concern right now, but something we'd like to keep an eye on. The main outputs we're focused on in this model. If it's a millage impact, we're obviously focused on the millage. You all have operating millage and debt service millage. So we're looking at both of those. If it's a revenue source like natural gas, solid waste, sewer, we're looking at the revenue source impact. How much revenue do you need to raise to cover new debt or new projects? So that's something we're focused on. Fund balance, very important there. If you cash fund a lot of projects and your fund balance drops down, you all clearly want to know that. Does it go below a minimum policy or target that you want to see there? So fund balances is loaded in. Revenue and expenditure performance, as I mentioned, on a projected revenue and expenditure basis, we have the ability within the model to look at different growth assumptions there. Certain revenues or expenditures may be growing at a faster pace than others. And so it allows you to input those assumptions and see what the impact would be. We've also loaded in a couple of things. And these models, we continue to update them to allow a little bit more flexibility. And if we think something would be helpful, we add, we add that in. And so, you know, with some of the recent developments, we've added in a little bit of flexibility to look at bearing assumptions on things like hospitality, I feel I mentioned that, if you have a hospitality fund, you know, what if those hospitality revenues go down next year and then start to go back up? And so you can look at different assumptions year to year. You can look at revenue, I'm sorry, expenditure assumptions. If you have one time revenues, salary increases in a given year, we've got the ability to do that, isolate it to a single year, then go back to more of a flat growth rate. So we're looking at revenue and expenditure performance. Here comparisons, credit rating impact, I mentioned that. And then ensuring that whatever plan we develop and is agreed upon is going to comply with any financial policies or targets you may have, whether that's fund balance, debt service coverage, millage impact. So those are the different outputs we're focused on and you'll see those. We have, within this presentation here, we have screenshots from the model. And so we've preloaded certain things and made certain assumptions and we've got the screenshots loaded up. If we wanted to, if we really could pull up the model itself. Trying to go to the next page, I just want to hit on some of the main assumptions, underlying assumptions we have in the model. So, because these are, as I mentioned at the outset, the assumptions are key in terms of projections here. And so we've assumed that the city's assessed value, your value of the mill, and in turn, your property tax revenues are growing at a 1% rate per year. So year over year, 1% growth. Historically, y'all seeing a little bit higher growth than that, but we want to be conservative and looking at some of these projections. And so that is just growth and tax base. We're not assuming, you know, any sort of reassessment years, any, you know, big new developments coming online that are going to grow that by more. We just have a flat 1% growth rate on, on property tax revenues. All of the revenues and all operating expenditures, to keep things a little bit more plain vanilla right now, we've, we've left those flat to your audited fiscal '19 level. So how you ended up on fiscal '19, we've assumed on a revenue and expenditure basis, except for property tax revenues, that those are simply flatlined off of '19. As you get in, you know, get close to year end on 2020 numbers, we load those up and see if those change. If you've got budgeted 2021 figures, we can load those up. And so these are dynamic. Again, we can update these different figures. We can change assumptions. For now, we wanted to keep it pretty basic in terms of projections. So everything's, most things are flatlined off of your fiscal '19 levels. You know, we're focused on transfers too. You know, we were really matching the, the numbers in the model match, how your audit is set up. And so you all have different transfers coming in and out of the different funds. And so, for instance, on the solid waste fund, which is kind of carved out from the general fund, we have a transfer that would come in from the general fund to the solid waste that however much is necessary to basically break even in that solid waste fund. It's a relatively minor amount, but wanted to note that. That's a little bit different than some of our other assumptions in there. And then for the other transfers, again, we are assuming that what you've done in '19 in terms of the transfers between funds, we, that would be the case going forward. With the exception, when you all issued your installment purchase revenue bond in 2019, we made certain adjustments to transfers coming in, for instance, from the natural gas fund or from hospitality to cover, because those funds are going to help cover some of the installment purchase revenue bond debt service that came online. In terms of debt funded projects or within the full capital list, clearly there's projects that are cash funded. And then clearly there's projects that are debt funded. And when I say clearly, that's just driven by the size. If you have a $10 million project loaded up or in our, that capital need list, you can't cash fund that. So we have that turned on for debt right now. The only debt, we have the big ticket items loaded up as debt. For all debt, we've assumed on the long term basis that you do that over a 20-year level debt service, which means you have a level payment each and every year, mortgage style. And we've assumed an interest rate of 4%. To the extent you all have a couple of lease purchases loaded up for vehicles and equipment, and we've assumed those are shorter, those have a shorter useful life. And so a five-year level debt service at 2.5%. So just wanted to note, again, some of these high level assumptions that we have in the model for revenues, expenditures, transfers and debt. So starting with the general fund, on the next page, Sean, we have the, the full list, and this is the list that Sean referenced. This is the capital request list for the upcoming budget year. There's a couple of projects hanging, you'll see at the top there, a few things that are still to be funded in fiscal '20 that we have loaded up, but mostly 2021 projects. And then this, this continues, the general fund's the biggest here with the project list. It continues on to the second page. But for now, looking at that page four, you'll see that list of projects. You'll see the amount, you'll see the year funded. And then this is where we start to have some optionality in the model where we can identify, how are we going to fund that? Are we funding that out of your operating millage? Or are we funding that out of debt service millage? If it's debt service millage, that is, that is going to be debt that you issue and repay, typically from a general obligation bond or an installment purchase revenue bond, which you end up paying for with an annual geo bond as well. But some of the, for instance, those bottom three projects on page four, bigger ticket items, four and a half million for some streetscape improvements, two and a half million for park improvements and two and a half million for a fire station. All of those right now are plugged into the model in fiscal '22. And we are assuming those are debt funded and those are paid for with debt service millage. And so you'll see the impact to your debt service millage when we get to that slide. That vehicle replacement, what we've done here is highlight any non-cash or debt items here. So that vehicle replacement, that would be paid out of your operating millage because it's a lease purchase. And so a distinction between a lease purchase and something like an installment purchase revenue bond or geo bond, that's a relatively small amount. And that's the one that would be, you know, amortized over a five-year period as opposed to those three projects down low, which would be 20-year longer term debt. The list of projects goes on to the next page and you'll see how these go out to fiscal year 2025. And actually, we have one, a phase two swamp rabbit trail out there for fiscal '27. Several other debt funded projects loaded up in there. The 418 interchange, swamp rabbit trail phase one and two, and then a new city complex. All of those, you'll see the amounts there, the timing. And then the debt service, again, debt service millage is the current assumption to fund those. When we look at the bottom, you'll see the total general fund projects over the next five years, fiscal '21 through '25, and that swamp rabbit phase two, which right now is put in at fiscal '27, total 32.8 million. So a lot of projects loaded up. Of that amount, two point, approximately 2.2 million would be funded with cash. The remaining amount, 30.7 million would be funded with debt under this current assumption. So those are the projects that are right now turned on. There's other projects in there that right, we turned off. And so, you know, when we get to the end of this, we may say, hey, let's turn some projects off or further, and we can certainly do that and tell you how that end up with those scenarios. Six would be the output. So what are we? Am I still with you guys, Sean? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Okay. Are you on, are you on page six there?
There we go. Sorry, yeah, you were cutting out a bit.
Sorry about that. So what we're focused on here are the outputs. And so these are again screenshots from our model. And so at the top of page six, you'll see annual debt service requirements in the general fund. And so this is taking into account all of your existing debt service, which is in teal, that's in the bottom. That peaks right now in fiscal '21 and then starts to go down slightly. Now, you're around $700,000 per year in debt service at your peak. So a fairly low debt level currently. However, when you turn on $30 million of projects over the next few years, you'll see how that jumps up considerably. And with the different timing of projects between fiscal '22 and all the way out to fiscal '27, you'll see how that starts to stair step up as new debt is layered on. At its peak in fiscal '28, you'll see that you're about at 2.7 million. So it's a, you know, if you did every project along the lines and the amounts and timings from the prior page, you'll see how that, your debt service really ramps up over the next several years. One other, one of the constraints we're focused on is your capacity, your debt capacity. And so I want to talk a little bit about kind of difference between debt capacity and debt affordability. Debt capacity is do you, can you issue your debt versus debt affordability? Can you all afford to pay for it? Do you want to, you want to raise millage to be able to pay for it? And so debt capacity, in South Carolina, you all can issue general obligation bonds up to 8% of your assessed value. So right now, your 8% capacity, which is what we call it, is around two and a half million. You only have about $500,000 in geo bonds outstanding right now. It's in one series of geo bonds that count towards that 8% limit. So you have about $2 million of capacity currently. Now, you may, the first question may be, well, how do you issue $30 million and stay under that $2.5 million capacity mark? And that's where that installment purchase revenue bond structure comes into play. The members that were on city council previously may remember some of that discussion. But one way to pay for installment purchase revenue bonds, which don't count against your 8% capacity, but one way to pay for those is to issue a geo bond each and every year that pays off each year in the amount of debt service on your installment purchase revenue bonds. So that's what we've assumed here. It's really a way to leverage your 8% capacity and, and fund some of these projects. And so what this shows you, this chart shows you is you could actually do $30 million worth and remain under your 8% capacity limit by doing those as installment purchase revenue bonds, issuing geo bonds each and every year. Now, you get pretty close, you get over $2 million worth of geo bonds, you know, out in fiscal '28, but that is still under what your 8% capacity would be. So you, from a capacity standpoint, you could do those. Now, let's talk about from an affordability standpoint, if you want to do those. That would be on the next page, page seven. Let's talk about tax impact. Right now, I mentioned at the outset, you, you all have the operating millage and debt service millage. Your debt service millage is simply tied to the amount of geo bond, geo debt you have outstanding. So you all levy 11.6 mils. Your value of the mill is about $31,000 or so. In order to fund, if you remember back to that spreadsheet or the sheet a couple of pages prior, your debt service goes up over two and a half million. And in order to fund that jump up, your debt service millage would have to increase significantly to do that, from 11.6 mils. You can see it in the bullet points and in the graph. It would go up by 14 mils in '23, another 24 mils in '24, another 11, then another 10. When all is said and done, out in fiscal '28, your debt service millage would be around 71 mils, which is about a 60 mil increase. And so this is where we're talking about the distinction between capacity. Could you do it? Yes, and stay in your capacity. Can you afford to do it? That's where you all may say, that's way too big a mill increase. We can't fund all those projects. Let's look at different options to do that, delay some projects, find some other sources of funds. And so we wanted to start with what I would call the most severe scenario, the most drastic scenario, where you funded everything with debt service millage. Again, to the extent you have some additional revenues or other revenues, some grants, some third party sources, use a little bit of cash on hand to do that. We can go down from that increase. But, you know, when you look at the reality of things, if you're looking at funding $30 million worth of projects, you know, there's going to be, there's going to be an increase associated with that. So we wanted to show you the most drastic scenario there. And so that's the general fund impact. I might, on the next page, when we look at fund balance impact, because those are our two main impacts we're focused on, our two main outputs here, your general fund, your fund balance. And so the top page shows you what we call net earnings. That is basically revenues, less expenses, less capital projects that you're funding. And so you'll see that, you know, you're pretty close to break even. You have some years where you've, where you have a, a drop in net earnings and that's because you are cash funding certain projects. I will say from an operational standpoint, revenues over expenses, you, you are generating a slight surplus on a projected basis. But then when you fund certain projects, you have approximately $2 million worth of projects, if you remember back a few pages, that you would cash fund under this scenario. And so that's where you're seeing those drops. And then the bottom chart looks, it works in concert with the, the net earnings. And so this is your unassigned fund balance. You all have a very healthy unassigned fund balance right now, a little over $3 million. And so you'll see that decline a little bit. You'll see the drop more so in fiscal '23 and '24. That's because we have certain projects being cash funded in those years. And some of those bigger ones are, you know, you have the Georgia street park renovations for 250. You have a couple Fairview street park renovations, 250,000, Amphitheater 200. If you look back at that list, there's, you know, some bigger ticket items that we're assuming you cash fund there. So that's why you see the drop. But the good news is that drop in unassigned fund balance still keeps you at a good level. And that good level that we've targeted, that's a yellow put there. That level is 25% of your expenditures. I believe that's the level. I'm trying to pull up our model. Will, if you're online, will tell me as well.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, 25% of your operating expenditures is what that yellow line equals. And so that's what the target is. And you'll see that you can cash fund several of those projects, maintain that over the next five years, again, based on some of these assumptions we have. So what that also tells you is you don't have a lot of room to apply cash or fund balance to that $30 million worth of the debt funded projects. And so that's where, you know, even if we shifted a little bit over to cash, you don't have a whole lot of wiggle room there within your unassigned fund balance. But again, on a projected basis, if you fund those to a little over $2 million, you could certainly do that and stay in a good spot fund balance wise. Sean, I don't know if it's appropriate to, to pause here for a second. At this point, we go on to some of the other funds and we have the same sort of setup here with projects. I'm happy, Sean, I'll take your direction. I can either kind of go through the other funds and then take any questions or pause here on the general fund. What's your preference there?
Yeah, why don't we pause there and, and see if anybody has any questions? And the majority of you all are muted. So if you do have a question, you'd, you would need to unmute yourself. Well, the one thing I just wanted to add is kind of what, what David was alluding to is the fact that, you know, I don't think there's going to be an appetite to increase millage of that magnitude. And honestly, I don't know if, if city staff could manage $32 million worth of projects in five years. But this just gives you an idea of the, of the fact that we, we can fund it under our debt capacity and still maintain adequate levels of, of fund balance and things like that. But it would take a significant millage increase. And therefore, I think council is going to need to prioritize some of the, some of the, the projects that we want to do right away. Some of the projects that we feel can, can be pushed out some years back. Some projects we may say, we don't want to do at all. Some of these, there might be other funds that can be involved, grant funds. There's, there's a lot to play with here. But I think the, the main gist of this is, you know, do we have the ability? Yes, but there, there's probably not an appetite to, to fund all of these at once. And, and like I said, this would be extremely difficult for city staff to manage $32 million worth of projects.
Well said.
Anybody? Mayor?
No, I agree, Sean. You know, that's, it's great to see it laid out for us and the public to see sort of that, you know, we do have big visions, but we got to be fiscally responsible. And so, but it's, you know, it's nice to see all these on the radar. And I know we always look at projects like this during our council goal setting session each year to help give some guidance on that. So, but yeah, this is very helpful.
Great, Sean.
I would just, this is David, I would just add, you know, the benefit of having a model set up like this is, you know, without certain of these projects are going to change in amount and timing. They might go away completely. And so we have these all set up and literally with a click of a button, we can turn them off. We can move them out and you can see what that impact is. And so as you all continue with this budget and even on a going forward basis, this, this model, this tool is at your disposal. And so it's really just working with Sean and Naomi to update different scenarios. And so part of the goal of today's session is really to introduce this model to the new members and reintroduce it to the ones that have been on council and let you know this is something you've got and we can, we can adjust and run scenarios as necessary going forward.
Councilmember Mahoney, did you have a question?
I did. In the list here, I don't see anything about the completion of Main Street. I'm just, just wondering, is that something we're not going to consider?
That is the Jones to four eighteen streetscape.
Okay, I got you.
Have as an estimate of four and a half million dollars.
God, okay.
And on these cost amounts, most of these are estimates. Some, we've got firmer numbers than others. But I would say that the longer that we push out some of these construction projects, those prices only increase. The equipment probably is going to remain about the same. But if, if we estimate that a streetscape now would cost four and a half million dollars, the likelihood would be that if we push that out an extra five years or so, you might, you might add another million dollars or more to that project.
I understand. But are these, these aren't prioritized in any order, I'd say.
No, in fact, really, it's, it's kind of just throwing everything at you all together and turned all of the projects on. So there's, there's really no prioritization other than us dictating kind of a a schedule of when the projects would be funded. But obviously, those can also be altered.
Well, I mean, would it be apropos for us at some point to, if these are all the projects that we want to do, to prioritize them?
Definitely. So my, my recommendation would probably be let, let's look at the things that we want to do or that are absolutely necessary for fiscal year twenty twenty one. And then let's start, you know, maybe picking two to three projects that are a little further out and, and see what the model shows us as far as what the millage increase would be for some of those, what that would do to fund balance and go from there.
Well, personally, I like to do that sooner than later.
Right, that was a question I had, Sean. Are these, these fiscal twenty one items, are those things that you, maybe you, you are thinking about, staff is thinking about folding into the budget already that we'd get, that we look at in the next few weeks?
Especially these twenty one, these were all requests straight from department heads. And so we tried not to censor those. It always just wanted to make sure that council saw all of those. And so yes, in the coming weeks, we're going to need to prioritize even the items that we want to fund in fiscal year twenty one.
Thank you.
Hey, Sean, Phil Clummer, question on the police department vehicle replacement. How many, how many vehicles is that, do you know, for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
That's four Durangos and the entire equipment package. It includes the striping, all of the lights, but it's for Durangos and the equipment. Put it in there.
And these are released, correct?
Correct.
Thanks.
If nothing else, we will move on to our next fund.
Yeah, I would, yeah, one thing I would note, you know, I talked about the different, the eight percent debt limit. You know, city council wanted to consider any of those projects for a referendum. You have no limit in the amount you can do with referendum voter approval. So I just want to mention that as well. If certain of these projects, you wanted to put out the voters, you certainly could. There's no limit on the amount you could do there, so you're not constrained by that eight percent. But I just wanted to mention that last, last note that popped in the head. So the natural gas fund, you'll see the same setup as we had for general fund. It's a little bit simpler here. We have, you'll find that there's no debt funded projects over this near term horizon here. There's a few twenty twenty projects still loaded up in there, a good number of twenty twenty one projects. And what you'll find, even going to the next page, they, that these only go out, I think, through fiscal twenty one, or I'm sorry, fiscal twenty two. The biggest ticket item is that PWR building, three million dollars. Right now, we have that turned on as, on as a cash funded project and looking at the unrestricted cash that's, that was in that fund at the end of fiscal nineteen. It appears you could fund that with cash. You could also do a natural gas revenue bond if you wanted to maintain the cash at a higher level. And we'll show you those outputs at a second. But we, you know, we typically start with these as turning everything on as cash that we could just to avoid any debt financing and interest costs associated with that. And so with the assumptions we have here, it looks like you could cash fund that project. That's something we can continue to monitor, certainly as you get into fiscal twenty one as well. But a total number of projects of about five and a half million over the next couple of years. Again, the biggest one being that three million dollar project. So how does that look in terms of the impact of financial? On page twelve, you'll see debt service, it is just teal. So that is existing natural gas debt service that you have a little under four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. We didn't have any of those projects turned on as new debt. So you won't see any proposed debt service being layered on. Your existing debt goes out for about twenty thirty one. So you don't really have much in the way of what we call roll off capacity, where that's rolling off and you can layer on new debt without an impact for the next ten years or so. But a fairly low level of debt service there over that timeframe. From a natural gas net earnings perspective, you'll see a drop in fiscal twenty one. That's because we have all those projects being funded as cash. So from an operational standpoint, you're still creating a surplus, but then you cash fund those projects as capital outlay. And it would show a drop in terms of net earnings, which in turn, looking at your unrestricted cash on page thirteen, you will see that you've got a good fund balance level at the top. You ended nineteen, you know, a little over six million dollars. You'll see the drop from twenty to twenty one if you funded everything with cash, including that three million dollar project. And so if that level, you know, makes city council a little bit uncomfortable, you can do a three million dollar or a one and a half million dollar, you can split it. These projects don't have to be a hundred percent cash or a hundred percent debt. You can split these up. You can do some portion as a, as a borrowing over a ten, fifteen, twenty year basis. If you didn't want to see your cash drop out of the gate in fiscal twenty one to a little over three million dollars. But you'll see how that grows. It is growing though, because we don't have any, we don't have much in the way of capital projects being funded past twenty two. So odds are you're going to have some of those. So the question is kind of from a unrestricted cash standpoint, what's a good comfort level? We tend to, you can look at a sheer dollar amount in that fund or you can convert that. We look at it, some lenders look at this in terms of days cash on hand, which is simply unrestricted cash divided by operating expenditures. It tells you how many days basically you could operate with no revenues coming in. And so we have a target there of two hundred and ten days. You know, again, that's, you can have a lower target if you'd like as well. And you'll see that you still hit that target in the outer years. But again, we don't have that, any other capital projects turned on there. You dip below that slightly in fiscal twenty one to about a hundred and eighty days. And so that would be the picture if you cash funded everything. Again, I think the main question for city council to consider during the budget process is if they would potentially want to debt fund all or a portion of that three million dollar project.
And I wanted to add that for those that aren't real familiar with that, that project, the city is in the process of acquiring some property at a very good or very reasonable amount of money in order to relocate our fountain and natural gas building and our public works yard. They are currently out of space over there in downtown on Jones. And this would be an opportunity to get them into, into a better space. And I mentioned the public works part of it. And so this would be a project that could also be funded with sewer fund revenue and could also be funded with general fund revenue as well. So this would not be, have to be entirely paid out of the natural gas fund.
How close are we on that, Sean?
Our REWAS attorneys are drafting up an agreement. And then the, they'll be sending that over to David Holmes. And so we're, we're getting pretty close to being able to bring that agreement to council.
Okay, so at some point, there'll be some discussion around what we want to do with existing property?
Correct. Mr. Chee Wood, did you want to talk about the coverage ratio?
I, yes, sorry, that was the last slide in this natural gas fund. And so the debt service coverage ratio, when we talk, that is net rep, which is revenues less operating expense divided debt service. And so you saw when we were looking at your debt service, you were a little over three hundred, you're about three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollars per year in debt service. And so when we look at your coverage level, you'll see that you're over three point five times. And so your net revenues exceed your debt service by three point five times. That's very strong. That target level anywhere from a one twenty five to one fifty is a good coverage level. You are well in excess of that. And so that would tell you that you do have some capacity there if you wanted to issue some debt that was serviced by the natural gas fund and still maintain a good coverage level.
Sean, I have a quick question about the trends over the last few months with these warmer months. Do we see that, I mean, majorly impacting this sort of model?
No. With the, the way our natural gas fund works is we always cover our costs. We pass the cost of gas onto the customer. And so even when there is a, is a dip in price or a dip in consumption, we still always make our money back on that.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the third of four funds we have highlighted here, the sewer fund. And so here, again, a pretty short list of projects that have been submitted here over for twenty one. And there's one project out there for fiscal twenty three. You'll see they're all cash funded, just given the amounts there, about nine hundred and forty five thousand dollars worth of projects. And so given all of those, we're really focused on your impact on your cash, because those are cash funded projects. And so on the next page, we'll see, I should know, you do have debts, just like the natural gas fund, you have some debt outstanding that the sewer fund services. And so that's a little under four hundred thousand dollars as well. Your sewer fund net earnings, you'll see how that buries and that's really in line with the capital outlay. And so you see a dip a little bit in fiscal twenty one because you're funding certain projects. As of now, we don't have any on the list for fiscal twenty two. So you'll see a positive net earnings there. And then it's pretty much break even in fiscal twenty three with that one project turned on. From a unrestricted cash, similar to the natural gas fund, from an unrestricted cash standpoint on the next page, on eighteen, you will see how that is a little over one point five million at the end of fiscal nineteen. It grows slightly and really kind of stays level over fiscal twenty and twenty one and then grows in twenty two and stays level there in concert, again, with that net earnings. You're pretty much break even in that fiscal twenty three. So that cash level looks good there, gives you some flexibility as other projects arise. From a days cash on hand, you have a significant number of days cash on hand, just given your, that one and a half to two million dollar cash versus your operating expenditure. So based on these assumptions and these projects here, it looks like your sewer fund can certainly, certainly handle those. Debt service coverage is on the next page and you'll see your debt service coverage is very strong within the sewer fund as well. You're about two times coverage over that. And so your debt on your sewer fund, your debt goes out to twenty twenty nine. And so as you get closer and closer to that cliff, you will have some natural capacity that, that comes online for new debt service to. Any questions on the sewer fund?
That's, moving on to solid waste?
Yeah, I think we just have one, maybe one last page or two last page on solid waste. The solid waste, we just have one project there, vehicle replacement, five hundred and sixty two thousand. That would be in fiscal twenty two, so nothing in the upcoming budget year. We have that turned on as a lease purchase, so a five year type financing. And so that's where you'll see that debt service you have a little bit that you're funding out of that solid waste revenues that ends in fiscal twenty one. And then the new debt service, if you issued it in fiscal twenty two, it would hit starting in fiscal twenty three and go for five years, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year. And as we noted at the outset, for the solid waste fund, we don't have things like cash and earnings, because what we're basically saying is to the extent a solid waste fund is, needs support, the general fund will support that to basically let it break even. So there's no ongoing, you know, positive fund balance right now, based on the assumptions we have there. So that was the, that covered the four main funds, which you didn't see in there. But one of the funds we have loaded up in the capital planning model is your hospitality fund. Again, we don't have any projects currently loaded up in there. You do service some, some existing debt out of that fund and you, it is helping support some of the installment purchase revenue bond debt service that was issued last year. I know that's certainly one that's going to be under some pressure over the next several months. Hopefully, it's a short timeframe that that's under pressure, but we didn't, we didn't load that. Don't have that pulled up just because we don't have any projects loaded up that would be funded adequately. But, you know, based on a flat line of projections from nineteen, you're able to generate a good surplus in there each and every year. The odds are, again, towards the tail end of fiscal twenty and beginning of fiscal twenty one, you can come in with a little pressure in that fund. But the goal would be to try to break even as much as possible there and get back on the upside.
Any questions for Mr. Chee Wood or Sean on this? I don't see anybody. Go ahead.
No, I just want to say thank you guys. Thank First Tryon for, for helping us put this together.
Thanks, David and Will.
Thank you for having us. Look forward to it in person the next time hopefully and hope everybody stays safe and healthy. We appreciate you inviting us to join.
Thanks. All right, Mr. Baller or Naomi, would you like to take?
Sure, so we put out a hospitality grant application form on the city's website. put out a hospitality grant application form on the city's website for entities in in the community to apply for. We received three applications. We received an application from Kathy from the Fountain and Chamber of Commerce and the Fountain and Museum. The on Naomi, feel free to jump in at any point here. I think the main thing for our two percent hospitality tax is the kind of the restrictions from state code on what those funds can be spent for, spent on there for tourism related facilities and buildings for advertising promotions. And it can be used for things such as roads and bridges and infrastructure to serve tourism related demands.
This slide that just shows some of our existing programs that we fund out of hospitality tax. We currently out of the hospitality tax fund, we send a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the yacht center and fifty thousand from the natural gas fund for a total of two hundred thousand dollars to our yacht center. Fountain and Chamber of Commerce, we are recommending this year an increase in a dollar amount that we contribute to them. Fountain and History Museum, as David said, we do have some funding for IPRB for Woodside Park and some funding for out of hospitality to support the splash pad. And then we have a hundred thousand dollar transfer in from hospitality tax to service to fund some of our special event projects such as trunk retreat, our music series, the Christmas festival and our Fourth of July festival. This is just an informational slide. We Sandra and I keep up with the hospitality tax revenue as they come in monthly and annualize it so that we can project for future projects. It's very small, but this helps us budget for future fiscal years and it shows the growth in each by each restaurant. And for privacy, we block those off, but these are the dollar amounts and how they grow. So those annualized collections is four hundred and fifty thousand. And this was obviously as of January's remittance, we are expecting a decline, so this this will change.
I suppose Naomi that we have any idea what that decline is going to look like just.
I do not, we'll have a better picture after the remittances are turned in on April twentieth. And then again, on May twentieth, we'll really see the impact of this.
So Naomi.
Yes.
Is the chamber still planning on taking responsibility for some more events that's going to be held in the city? Or they're going to refuse to host some of host some of the events?
In their application, they listed some events that they plan on hosting for the city. I don't have it right in front of me, but I can end the packet out to everyone.
Okay.
I believe there's proposed no change in current level of activity, to my knowledge, so. And Phil, also to your point, one of the questions, you know, we have to think about is the impact of COVID nineteen on this. But also, it's not real, it it isn't, you know, we're going to get a little bit of a hit definitely for the next few months through the end of the fiscal year. The question that we have to sort of wrestle with, and I think John's going to kind of lay out scenarios for is what happens if this continues past July one, not just in terms of restrictions, but also the health of the business itself at that time, businesses themselves, the status of unemployment in the area for folks who spend money in our town. Those are some factors that we don't really have a good picture on, like like Ms. Reed said, but we going, you know, I think by the May first reading, we're going to have a pretty good, hopefully, a better idea of when this would end. And then we'll be able to really make a, I think, a really good informed decision.
Okay, Mayor, because of the COVID nineteen, do we have emergency fund in place? Just in case the projects that we have lined up or prioritized, will they be put on hold due to the COVID nineteen? And use those remaining funds for emergency situations?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Reader, Sean, hospitality might be the one that gets hit the hardest out of our revenue streams for this. We may have delayed collections for some others in theory, but what I guess Anthony's, I just want to frame Anthony's point to that and then turn the question over to you, are there going to be, what is the plan? Are there any projects that would be impeded by that?
And Naomi?
Yes.
Do you have the dollar amounts for yacht center and chamber? Do y'all have a dollar figure in mind for those already?
Yes, they're on the next few slides.
Okay.
So to Mayor and Mr. Cunningham's question, we are looking at all revenue streams and how this virus is going to affect those line items. Obviously, some delays in business license, we are anticipating that. Obviously, as people unemployment rate goes up, their ability to pay for utilities will affect our franchise fees. There's five percent of collections of utility cable in our area. There's just a lot of lines that we don't know right now how it's going to affect. So we're we're still just analyzing.
But April twentieth is when all of the March hospitality tax i- is due, and we know that not all of March had restrictions. And so really, I think, May twentieth, when we get all of April's hospitality tax returns that is really going to be the best indicator.
Correct.
Are we considering giving our restaurant any break on that at this point or?
I thought it's my opinion is I I would be totally open to entertaining something at the April council meeting regarding that. In terms of hospitality tax, it is a tax that is passed on to the consumer. I know their cities have laid have waived penalties for late payments on that. That there's also the business license thing. And I think one of the questions I have, you know, during this conversation and going forward is before next Thursday is seeing kind of what staff's opinion is and maybe putting something together for us to discuss.
Sounds good.
The Culture Arts Foundation Fountain Inn requested two hundred and eighty-three thousand in their grant application. As Ms. Reed mentioned, we have previously been funding Kathy at an amount of two hundred thousand a year for the past three years. This FY twenty-one budget will be the first year that the city is not obligated by contract to fund to fund Kathy at any amount. Staff prior to COVID hysteria was recommending funding in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand. I think you know, that is something that we're going to have to monitor. If if revenues were to diminish because of the epidemic, possibly reducing that down to one hundred thousand might be prudent, but again, these were, these were preliminary staff recommendations. And and obviously, our world has kind of flipped everything upside down.
And and Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, this is now moving the if that were to go through, regardless of the amount, all of it is now H and A, it is not pulling or hospitality tax funded, it is not pulling from any other fund account?
That's correct.
Right, this would be, so if if we were to fund at a hundred and fifty thousand, that would actually be the exact same amount from the hospitality tax fund that we've been funding the last several years. This would just eliminate the fifty thousand dollars that would be coming out of the natural gas fund. Any questions on that? John? Yes, sir.
On Kathy. I thought, you know, when we started funding them three years, four years ago, that we were going to stop funding after that period of time. Am I not right?
I wasn't here for those conversations, I wasn't.
Naomi, is that right?
That was a discussion at one point, but last year's model, the model we just went through, we kept the funding at dropping at fifty thousand dollars every year instead of just eliminating it after the contract ended.
Okay, so we're going to do one fifty, then a hundred and then fifty, and then none. Is that correct?
Now we have this application in place, so the application would be reviewed each year and then council would decide on the level of funding.
No, John, you are, John, you are correct. When we turn the the center back over to yachts Kathy, that was with the agreement that we would continue funding for three years and then it would be discontinued. It would have.
That's what I thought.
That is absolutely correct.
But, you know, now we're going back and we're continuing to fund.
Well, they 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 put in the application though. So it's, we're talking about funding them through this application, which is a new a new process.
I realize that, but what I'm saying is, you know.
John is right, we had that discussion and the agreement was, as he stated to you all, was that we was going to be no longer funding them because they were self efficient to take care of themselves. This was prior to that application even coming out. Am I right, Phil?
Correct.
Well, this new process.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, with this new process, though, it's open up to anybody to apply for funds, correct?
Correct.
So it's not that we're continuing to fund them, it's just they went through the process and are applying for funding for this year, correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
But they were supposed to be self sufficient after those initial three years. And I haven't seen any kind of effort towards that.
Agreed. Is there some kind of caveat that we can put when we give money through this process?
I thought we did that when we agreed to pay them for three years.
Right.
Did we not?
Right, correct.
So so the contract that was in place was for three years at that, at the end of that contract, there is, the contract then ends. So there is no promise in the contract of no, no support going forward. The contract was just for a life of three years. So now we have a hospitality tax application process of which they are now participating. So I don't, I don't know if the question now is whether or not the end of three years is done. It's now, it's now, this is a new application, so we take it at the merit of the application. And I do think we need to pass around the application to make sure that everyone can read through it and see, see what's there and ask and ask questions. I've also been thinking about making sure that at the end of this process, regardless of organizations that are funded, that there is a final report. I don't think we've done a good job of of having at the end of any sort of support through hospitality tax accountability at the end through a final report and asking folks some of the questions that we've been asking of like, how have you gone after grant funding? What does that look like? Have you done fundraising? What does that look like? And and professional development for your staff and sort of those, those sort of metrics so that then we can be have better accountability. The contract that was in place did not provide any sort of accountability measures for both the city and yachts. And so that's a factor in, you know, what Garth, whoever is funded through this, this, those are, those are some accountability measures I would like to see put in place.
But this was done prior to us changing leadership role, am I right, Phil?
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
What John is talking about, we had, we had decided on that prior to Mayor George coming in and the other candidates.
That's true. GP, I I agree totally with what you're saying. And I don't want to get into wits here, but I I feel like if we're looking to fund at that significant amount, we certainly need some accountability as well as we should have someone from the city sitting on their board or at least attending their board meetings so that we can hold that accountability.
No, I don't, I don't disagree.
So much more to discuss on this, I would say.
I just don't see a an end to this thing. And, you know, we need to get tough with them. If they're, if they're going to continue to operate that show, and I I'm not against it, I think it's a great idea. But they are going to have to start working harder to be able to fund themselves, at least at a a more substantial rate.
I think that's what the bear is saying.
Yeah, I do not disagree. I think what I, what I wish was in the previous agreement were measures of accountability to better track that for both of our sakes.
Agreed, agreed.
And I don't think that, I don't think the contract that was in place did that for either party. And so going forward, I would like to see for for any entity, like I said, any entity funded would have that sort of accountability and tracking. So that's, I I don't disagree with that.
It may not have been in writing, but I thought when we started funding that, they started, they, they, we said that this is short term and you're going to have to be operated on your own two feet.
Three years.
Correct.
That's three, three years, John.
That's what I said, yeah.
Well, that's, we we can continue talking about, I think, with, you know, this is a different change from what we've had for these three entities of how they're funded. I think we need to continue having that conversation, I would say, for from my perspective. I don't know if, you know, we were not a part of that contract process, some of us, and also that contract has now ended and it can't, we can't be bound by just back and forth verbally because that would bind, we didn't, we're not binding future councils to to remarks that that we weren't privy to. So I think we're going to have to sort of just take this as application as it is and and discuss the merits of the application. Because that's, that's how we're going to be doing this going forward for any entity that applies for this funding, so.
I'm I'm all for that, but I don't think two hundred and eighty-three thousand is.
I I think the recommended, the recommendation is is one fifty, one hundred if if revenues are diminished as an option with COVID. And I think, you know, we can discuss the 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 whole, the whole thing. I think today is just to give an idea of what the recommendation has been that we have the ability to do. I know Sean and Naomi are working really, and her staff are working really hard on making sure this continues to be a balanced budget. So I know that they're not going to propose something we can't do, and I think it's up to council on the budget to talk about what we should do, so.
So basically, if I'm if I'm listening correctly, so basically what we had agreed upon prior is not relevant now, correct?
Well, it is in that the money, that there is no longer commitment to fund. We are not required to 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 fund this recommended hundred fifty thousand, that's, that's for us to determine in the budget. So but in terms of there any sort of promises that weren't listed in the con, that were listed in the contract, end with the contract. Any, any promises that were made that were not not written in the contract aren't something that we were privy to. And so we can't be held to that. But I also, the only point I'd make specifically with this request that Sean and Naomi have done is if you'll notice how the money is broken down, a good portion of it is reimbursable. Meaning this, this is not an automatic payment every month. This is based on their ability to put these things on and then and then have those expenses be certified and and as reimbursable. That's just, you know, regardless of what the amounts are, that's just, I I think that does provide another level of accountability. That's all, my, my organization is funded with a lot of grants and that's how we are kept in check. And so that's just another note of how this is structured is also, I think, of importance to note.
I agree.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to add that, yeah, we, Naomi and I started this application process last year. So this is only the second year for a formal application. And obviously Kathy did not need to apply through an application this past fiscal year because they were, we were under agreement under contract with them, but this is the first year. um, under contract with them, but this is the first year, um, that they wouldn't be, and so that's why they have submitted, uh, this application along with the chamber and the museum.
But Sean, you was there when we, um, did the agreement go, uh, going forward. You, you was there with us when we, um, all agreed that they was, they should be self-funded to themselves and not from the city. Am I right, John?
That's what I thought.
Right, all of us was there. So you submitted them an application, and you already knew what the council had already agreed to.
Well, that, uh, that, I'll take that.
They're free to submit an application because it's open to.
No, that's not what I'm saying. That's not what I'm saying, um.
Oh, okay.
They have the right to submit their application, but prior to them submitting it, Sean should have let them, I, I'm just saying, I'm just speaking for what I'm saying. Sean should at least, um, provide information based on what the council had already agreed upon.
Well, I, I, I would say, uh, that the.
Somebody should have told them, and we won't be going through the same discussion again. Because, um, you're gonna get the same thing, the same results again.
Well, we can, we can look how that, how, I think the devil is in the details with this application process, not just for Yance, though, but for all entities who apply for this type of funding.
Right.
And I think we need to have a lot more accountability in how this funding is done, uh, and for, for whatever entities is, is, is there. Uh, I said, you know, they, they do have a right to, to, to apply for this funding. We have, we, it is our job as council to make sure that, I mean, uh, I, I would much rather staff bring to us every application that is proposed, and, 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 and look at what is possible, and it's up to us to make that decision as a council of seven, uh, as to what, whether or not it's an appropriate amount or an appropriate allocation at all. And so, uh, I would, I would, so I, I'm, I'm glad that, that we are presented with this, uh, because otherwise those of us who were not in the room during those conversations would have, would have no say whatsoever. Uh, so I, I appreciate that. Are there any questions about, we, we are not determining this funding at, at this time. This is not, we're not voting on anything. Uh, so we may be, uh, maybe prudent to kind of, if you have specific questions about this, uh, and Sean, I would think we would want to send around all three applications to council so that we can, we can look into it and ask further questions, um, and allow the other, allow all the entities to respond if there are, you know, questions that, that we need, that we need to answer. Um, does, does that sound okay with everybody?
So, so I have a question around that, not to, not to beat a dead horse, however. So, so as we are reviewing this application request, will there, will representatives from, uh, the chamber and Kathy and so forth, will they come to present? Um, I guess for lack of terms, their case, why this funding is, is required?
I'm open to that. That might be, that might be good during a, a, a budget workshop, maybe, or during one of the, one of the meetings. I'm, I'm totally open to that.
The, uh, the plan was for actually that to happen this evening, um, when we had normal budget work sessions scheduled. Um, we, we didn't feel that, uh, having those entities present in a virtual manner, um, at this time, um, was, was the most appropriate. We, we're, we're hopeful that maybe we'll all be able to get back together um, prior to, to first reading of, of the budget in order for those entities to, to present.
Okay, that, that's fine. I guess I would just like to see more detail around these little bullet points that are underneath here that talk about $47,000 for marketing. What does that look like?
That's what we.
I'm sorry, AJ, what?
I'm sorry. Isn't my understanding, that's not what they're recommending? That's what you, that the staff, city staff is recommending to use? Because I would like to know why they're even applying for 283,000. That's a lot of money considering back to, um, um, Anthony and, and John's point, that they knew that the city council was not gonna fund them anymore, and then they applied for more money than they had before. So I do have concern about what do they intend to do with that money that they didn't do the things that they said they were going to do previously. So, but I, but I would like to have this discussion probably at another time.
I, I agree.
I agree, I agree, AJ. Thank you.
I agree. I agree. Yeah, we're not finished with this.
No.
Thanks, AJ.
All right. Any, any other comments, questions on this particular one? All right, let's go on to the next one, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. The next application that we are presenting is from the Fountain and Chamber of Commerce. They requested 100,000. Our prior, our current year funding, we actually didn't fund them directly. Um, in, uh, in, in the past, we have charged the chamber rent at an annual value of $7,200. Uh, this fiscal year, uh, we simply waived that rent. So it was a, uh, a, a total value of $7,200. Um, staff is recommending, um, funding the chamber at $20,000 in addition to the, the continuing, uh, the free rent valued at $7,200. Um, we still anticipate, uh, putting some sort of a lease agreement in place, um, uh, that would specify things like free rent, as well as security at events and things like that in the future. And then, and again, if, if revenues diminish, uh, we are recommending at 15,000 in, in addition to.
It's a pretty big disparity.
I think, uh, one of the ways to look at this applicable to all three, and you can kind of see it in the way that staff has structured, has, has laid out what makes up the recommendation, is all of the items listed in all of the entities are eligible for funding under state law for H tax. I think staff is really, uh, my interpretation is really, uh, targeting those sort of expenses, uh, that were maybe in the application that are related to those types of things so that, so that it conforms, uh, uh, very well to H tax law. Is that, uh, is that right, Sean?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, um, that 100,000 here, was that itemized?
I'm not 100% sure. Uh, I've got, uh, I, I don't have all of, I don't have the applications in front of me or anything, so.
I'd like to see an itemized list there, if that's the case.
I think, I think that is a part of their packet, so I think Sean, Sean and Naomi will send that around.
That would be good, because without the chamber taking over any events they previously held responsibility for, I would be close to that amount. Like the recommended amount staff has recommended.
Okay. Any other questions on that? All right, we will move forward to the Fountain and History Museum. The prior year funding, uh, was at $10,000. Uh, they did an application request of just over $50,000. Uh, we are recommending for a, uh, pre-coronavirus fountain in of $20,000, and, uh, and cutting that in half if revenues diminish. They did list, um, the itemized, uh, requests there. As you can see, um, the, the building expenses was, uh, was one of their major, uh, requests. I think that includes things like, uh, utility bills, and they've also requested that the city pay for, uh, either roof repair or roof replacement for the annexed building.
I think, uh, one, uh, what's important to note for the chamber and the museum, I think we mentioned this during the retreat, is, uh, they serve as our visitor's center. Uh, they have a lot of, you know, material there for new, new residents and, and new businesses. Uh, typically they get asked, you know, at City Hall. Uh, but also, um, when we have Friday concerts, when we have the farmer's market, when we have any sort of festival, uh, that building is, is almost always open to the public to access, including the restrooms, and, uh, they have, and, and all the utilities associated with them being open, and that bill has fallen on them. Uh, if so, in every Friday concert, everyone going into the bathroom, and if they need to restock or clean it, that, even though that's not their event, that's fallen on both of those entities to, to split. So, uh, I think proposal sort of helps alleviate that stress. Um, and also it is our visitor's center, and it's a, it conforms explicitly to what H tax is, allows for.
Is that the current salary of the museum?
I was just gonna ask that.
I mean, that, I mean, they're only open a few days a week.
In their application, um, Mr. Cox, he would like to increase the hours of a part-time employee they have currently. So that's reflective of that salary.
And I think.
I was gonna ask the same thing about the salary.
I think it also expands the hours that they would like.
But don't they do their fundraiser? They, they do fundraising too. So I guess, is in their application, were they asking for the grant to fund the salary? That's what this is, that's what they're saying, okay.
Yes, it was in their application. They all also provided the three years of financials, um, as well. Um, it was easier to pull out the detail from the museum application because it was identified, just, I've just actually cut and pasted um, from a recap I did. The other ones weren't, was not so easy to identify. Um, and so, but we will itemize it, go through the applications and itemize their requests as best we can, and provide, as well as their financials, which will give a better picture for everyone.
I guess my, my thought in regards to funding salary for an entity, I, I'm not so keen on that. But again, further, we could have further discussion on that.
And I don't know if the recommendation technically is attached.
It does. Well, it doesn't cover it, but I just, I, I guess in the future with the application, that might be something we might want to discuss, that the funds are not to pay salary per se, but we can discuss that later. It was just a thought I had.
That's right.
That is all, um, the hospitality tax grant applications.
All right, so just as a follow-up to that, that particular item, Sean, you'll email out the, uh, the applications that were sent?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, last, uh, part of our budget work session for, for this evening was to discuss the personnel requests. We have a request for an accounting clerk in the administration department, a part-time court clerk in the judicial department, a planning and development director, which would be a department head level, individual that would be in charge of economic development, in charge of special events, supervising our planning and zoning, um, and, and possibly some communications as well. The police department, uh, requested an additional detective and an additional certified police officer. The fire department requested a certified fire marshal and, uh, three additional firefighters. In the public works department, we have a request for an assistant public works director. And also two additional crew workers and an additional CDL driver. And the recreation department requested that they move one of their, uh, part-time employees to full-time status. So this was a total request of 14 positions, 13 of them full-time, one of them part-time. Uh, that was a, uh, salaries and burden was just over $730,000 worth of requests. You know, going into this budget process, uh, the city of Fountain Inn's finances have probably never been as strong. I, uh, I believe that staff would be inclined to, uh, to fund a lot of, uh, these personnel requests along with a lot of the capital, uh, equipment requests. Um, but with a couple factors, one being the COVID-19 bringing all of the uncertainty that it comes with, uh, I feel like it's prudent for staff to be really conservative, uh, for next year's budget. And then two, um, I know one of the, the underlying, uh, themes in the last year or so has been employee salaries. Um, and, and rather than, uh, spending $730,000 on new personnel, I believe that a lot of our, uh, department heads would like to use those funds in, uh, moving closer to phase two of our class and comp plan, and also increasing, uh, dependent healthcare coverage percentages. And so with that, our, our preliminary recommendations, uh, were to fund, uh, one crew worker in, uh, the public works department, fund the, uh, the planning and development director position, the assistant public works director position, and, uh, the additional detective in the police department. Uh, those would, uh, have a total, uh, with burden of just over $280,000.
Thank you.
Sean, I think I remember us in our retreat talking about, uh, fire service district and pursuing additional funding there to support our department, especially because of the growth that is outside of our city limits that we are still. That, that part of the equation for, uh, not a, not another fire, firefighter slot right now.
Yes, sir. So the, uh, our Fountain Inn Fire Department, uh, extends fire service to, uh, unincorporated part of Greenville County that goes well beyond our city limits. That, uh, those citizens have a, a separate millage on their annual tax bill uh, that just pays, uh, for that fire service. And we're not, we're definitely seeing, uh, tremendous residential growth in our city limits, but we are also seeing tremendous growth in that fire service, uh, area, as well as a lot of proposed residential growth in that area. Part of the process for asking Greenville County to levy additional millage for those residents in that fire service area would be to go to Greenville County and put together a capital improvement plan on, uh, and you would specify how, how many mills you want increased and what those mills would pay for, um, whether that would be additional equipment, it could be an additional fire station, it could be additional personnel. And so part of that process would be, uh, putting together the capital improvement plan, which we did dump into the capital planning model. And so from this budget process, we would be able to go to Greenville County and request additional millage. If that millage, uh, was indeed levied, um, I would say that, that then, you know, next fiscal year, we could reevaluate whether or not we wanted to fund additional, uh, personnel in the fire department.
Okay, Sean, I got a question. Um, those positions that's open, are they in applications form, or, or those, um, applications being reviewed?
Um, none of these positions have been advertised. These were just, uh, positions that the departments requested for our next fiscal year. Uh, some of them, uh, have job descriptions already. Some of these are, are new positions in the fact that we are still creating the job descriptions, uh, trying to figure out what, uh, uh, what that salary would be, what, what pay grade. Um, but no, none of these have been advertised yet.
Okay, um, the reason why I asked that question was, um, is, is it gonna be open up to the public? Or, or how, uh, is there a website they can go onto, um, to, um, download, they need to qualify for those positions? And would is, would the salary be listed on the application?
Yeah, anytime we have an open position, uh, the, it's advertised on our city website, and from there it goes out to a number of different job boards from, indeed. And, and many times on the, uh, app, on the job advertisement, we do list what the. we do list what the hourly, uh, wage or salary is for the position. And, and it will definitely ask what the qualifications are, how to apply and, and that sort of thing.
So now, now.
To Sean's point, this was just a request. And staff is, if you look down there at the bottom, staff is recommending that we lean up to, to those positions that are listed in block below.
Okay.
Are the salaries determined by the market as comparable to other places?
Yeah, so this past year, we had an entire classification and compensation study, uh, that was put together for us. So each position in the city has a, has a pay grade. Um, and they, they go from, you know, one to thirty-something. And we have, we actually have a grade, uh, for our general fund positions or our general city positions. And then we also have a separate category just for our, uh, natural gas department because the utility business is, is a little bit different. And they're competing with, uh, some entities such as Piedmont Natural Gas and the electric utilities and that sort of thing. Uh, so for positions like, uh, the detective, which we already have, we know what that pay grade is. And so that would be the, you know, the, the minimum salary plus the, plus the burden. On top of that, we already have crew worker positions. Um, so for the, the recommended positions, the planning and development director and the assistant public works director, um, as we create those, uh, job descriptions, we, we try to assign a pay grade to it based on, uh, where it would fall kind of in the pecking order. But that class and comp study took into account what our neighboring communities, uh, are paying. Um, it lists a minimum, a mid-range and a maximum, uh, salary for each position. Um, and they, they did a lot of benchmark, uh, jobs in comparing, uh, all around, uh, the region.
Any other questions on the personnel request?
I just want to make sure that, uh, when they do submit their application is that the process, um, uh, me personally, I would like to see it, that make sure there be a more, make sure that everybody get opportunity and, um, a fair chance to be able to apply for these positions.
Yes, sir.
See anyone else making any comments right now? Um, any, uh, I guess we just have a quick item on the agenda for a city administrator report. It's really an, uh, opportunity for Sean to give an update on any sort of COVID response or, uh, other sort of projects in the hopper that he wanted to get us up to speed on. Uh, Sean?
Is, I'll be brief and, uh, most of this i- is already known. Um, but our April events are all, uh, canceled or postponed, including the ribbon cutting and dedication for the new park, which was scheduled for tomorrow. Our Easter brunch has been canceled. Mac Arnold has been postponed to, uh, mid-October. And we have had to postpone the police department 5K yet again. We still do not have a date, uh, lined up for that. We don't have a, a date lined up for the ribbon cutting or dedication for the new park yet either. Uh, our city serve cleanup day is, was scheduled for the beginning of May. The way things are looking right now, there's a, that, that's likely going to have to be postponed. Postponing it any later, uh, into the spring and summer for us, um, is, is going to be difficult with our farmer's market. So if we want to postpone that, it'll likely have to be in the fall. On city operations, uh, with, uh, the epidemic, we have not been picking up or, and utilizing the inmates for trash pickup and yard debris. And so I just wanted to let the public know that we are, uh, behind right now on yard debris pickup. Um, we are still planning on moving forward with our May-spring cleaning. Um, but, you know, that always puts our, our public works department or, uh, strains them very much every year. And so this year, if we're looking at doing our, a May-spring cleaning without inmates, um, or, or any sort of temp labor or anything like that, that, that we definitely are asking our, uh, citizens to be patient with that. Um, we have had a great response to the community food drive that is being run, uh, uh, through our police department and the Fountain Inn Community Police Fund. Um, they are, um, seems like every day being able to collect a, a large amount of food that they are distributing to the three, uh, food banks in town. Uh, we do have two employees, uh, that are self-quarantined, um, a- at the moment. And, um, Mayor McClure mentioned, uh, that for our April regular council meeting, a couple of things that we may, uh, want to consider would be waiving penalties for hospitality tax, late payments, uh, waiving, uh, penalties for, um, late business license renewal and, uh, anything else that we may feel like we need to, uh, to do to help our citizens or businesses during this crisis.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, anybody have any, uh, I, I have one question on something I know you've been working on, Sean. Uh, we've been updating our city employees on, or at least our department heads on the, uh, on healthcare options, right? Is that something that council, when do you think council will be able to sort of have, uh, that conversation? Do you, would you think it would be in April at the, at the council meeting or at a, a budget retreat?
Um, I don't think we are going to have, um, uh, anything to be able to present next Thursday. Um, but we have, uh, pretty much narrowed our health insurance renewal options down to two. Uh, we had our health insurance broker, uh, host a virtual meetings, uh, similar to this with all of our department heads earlier this week and, uh, kind of went over the two different options. And, uh, Naomi and I are putting together some, some options for, um, increasing the percentage of dependent healthcare that the city covers. And, uh, we actually plan on putting out a survey for our city employees to kind of see what, uh, what, what they would like, uh, like to see as far as, um, their health insurance options. And then we're going to go from there, uh, with those results and bring those back to you guys.
Thank you.
Also too, for a quick update, everybody, um, I got good news. Since we've been listening to a lot of news, I have some good news. Um, with BMW shutting down for the last two weeks, when we go back, my schedule has changed, which is a good thing. Uh, we'll be doing eight hours now instead of ten. And my time now will be going in at nine-thirty. So therefore we don't have to worry about me leaving early for executive meeting because I'll be ready right on schedule and on time. So.
Right. Great, we, uh, that's, that's fantastic, Anthony. Uh, and, uh, I, I hope you guys get back to work soon and everything clears out all right.
Don't say that because I'm enjoying my time, oh.
All right. Uh, anything else? Uh, any other questions or comments?
No, just World Autism Day.
I got my button on.
Yeah.
I'd also like to say, um, this conference call has been great. Um, be able to, able to communicate with everybody live video. This is awesome. So I'm thankful for that part. I really am.
Yeah. Thanks, Anthony. And, uh, for those, uh, uh, we're still on a meeting, sorry. Um, so the, uh, just for everyone, especially if those are still tuning in online and for anyone who listens later, uh, for our April ninth regular council meeting, we will have, uh, opportunities for public comment. We'll issue directions on doing that, uh, as, as it gets closer. Uh, it will be probably livestreamed, not on, uh, probably on a YouTube channel to make it a little bit more accessible. Um, maybe just on the Facebook, we kind of evaluate some of those options. Uh, but it will look just like this and sound just like this. So, uh, I appreciate staff for getting this together so quickly. And also, uh, to Naomi, your staff and Sean, uh, all that you've done to start this budget process off even in this weird time. So I, I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Any, anything else? All right. Hearing none, uh, is there a motion to adjourn this workshop?
All my dead motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Phil, for making that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I saw, I saw John Mahoney's hands. So second to John Mahoney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. We are now adjourned. Thank you all.
All right, thank you.